Welcome to the Housing and Community Services Agency. I'm here for the Commissioners' meeting, and I'd like to call it to order. I sort of did that backwards. Anyway, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? No? Any public comment for housing? No? Commissioners' response? Well, no. Do we have any remonstrance? All right, emergency business, no? Moving right along, administration. So, order number 15-12-01-01H in the matter of authorizing the development and financing of the Oaks at 14th. Affordable housing development, and Steve?
Yes, welcome. Thank you. Yes, so I'm Steve Oaks, Development Director for HACSA. And I was going to give you a real quick update on how things are going with the project, and then put the resolution in front of you. So the Oaks at 14th is the HACSA-sponsored partnership that you're all very aware of. In the past, you've already authorized us to form the LLC to get things going. And then this resolution will basically allows Valerie and Jacob to sign all the financial documents and loan documents required to actually close the project and get construction started. So in order to kind of get the, give the public a venue about this project, we also formed a citizen advisory committee. And Commissioner Stewart's actually was kind enough to, he's been on the advisory committee along with Counselor Chris Pryor also, as far as two elected officials. And then we have co-chairs of Rick Duncan and David Schuman. And so we've had two meetings so far. We've held them over near the project and have had a pretty good turnout of folks and have talked through things like security, traffic, fences, and things like that. And yeah, so things are going pretty well. If things proceed as we forecast, we'll be closing financing in mid-April and starting construction shortly thereafter. So I don't know if you guys have any questions about the project or about the resolution itself. The resolution has many parts to it, but it generally allows, yeah, all the necessary documents to be signed.
What we're saying is that for a period of about 10 years, we'll get a certain amount of tax and credits to finances. Is that variable every year? Can they take it away?
The only way they can take it away is it would be the same amount each year for 10 years. They can only take it away if something occurs in the project that we don't generate the tax basis for them. So for example, if we didn't, fell out of compliance for some reason with the IRS requirements for having the tax credits. There are a lot of hoops that we have to jump through once the project's up and running even. And so if we're not serving the, say, the folks that we said we're going to serve, and we end up charging more for rents than we said, something like that happened. HACSA's never had that happen before, but that's something that could happen that could end up them taking tax credits away, so.
And just to add a little bit of detail to that, we hire a third-party management company to manage that tax credit compliance on the property. And then we have a contract with that third-party management company that puts the onerous on them to comply with all the IRS regulations. So it's not that we're responsible for their day-to-day. We have a company and some legal insulation for any issues that may occur.
So I hadn't seen this before, and I apologize, but I just wanted to declare, because there's a whereas in the authority that we're being, to obtain an investment in the LLC from U.S. Bancorp Community Development Corporation. My wife is employed by U.S. Bank. She's in private banking, but she's not part of the Community Development Corporation. So I just wanted to declare that. But I don't see a conflict here whatsoever. It's a large bank, and there's lots of different moving parts within the bank, and she's not associated with this, so we need to be clear about it. Just to declare that.
Yeah, I'd openly declare too that it's not stated in here who the general contractor is on the project, as I stated before in the past, that I have a family member that works for Essing. So probably be best to just, that's staying from 49 minutes, please.
All right, do we have a motion? No, or did you?
No, I think so.
So I've moved approval of order 15-12-01-01 in the matter of authorizing the development and financing of the Oaks at 14th. Affordable housing development.
Any discussion?
Question, do we need the H on the end of that? Order number?
H. It was an H.
12-01-H, sorry.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay. Oh, except you're abstaining. Abstaining. I couldn't say this. I'm sorry. Okay. Commissioner Stewart, is it stating? All right, motion has passed then. And so now we're going to go into an executive session. And the HACSA Board will meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS. Can I just put my glasses on to make sure I see those numbers correctly? 192 dot 6602D, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet an executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media are designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of our audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in executive session. We reserve the right to come back out into public sessions should the need arise.
All the regular meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, December 1st, 2015. And the first item of business is adjustments to the agenda. And I will note that there's going to be an executive session this afternoon after we finish our regular business. We have two timed certain agenda items this morning, one at 10 o'clock and one at 10:30. And I will also note that in the afternoon, we are going to hear item 12B before 12A. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda today? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. I have three people signed up for public comment. You'll get, I'll call your name. If you'll come up to the podium, state your name and where you're from for the record. And it looks like we have somebody that was, I'll ask additional people, so don't worry. So we probably have more. State your name and where you're from for the record, and then your three minutes will start. First person's Con Magnusson, followed by Laura Magnusson.
My name is Con Magnusson. I live in Veneta. I know a few of you here for a reason that probably you don't want to hear. In 1980, I broke out two lots in Lane County, and they were approved. In the 90s, I placed mobile homes on them legally, permitted through the planning department and the building department. Now, I've been in an ongoing battle with your tax assessor, who refuses to apply a tax lot number to a piece of property that was broke out in 1980. All of my other pieces I broke out were all issued tax lot numbers right after they were The ongoing thing of this, I got a threatening letter from Lane County, from the legal department, that stated that if I didn't comply with their, I can give you the copy to read, for the mobile home that's on tax lot 2601, that should be already a different tax lot. This was legally put in. I have all of the paperwork here signed off by the planning department. The tax department will not go to the county and look up anything. They told me they did not have to. Now, are you people running this county, or is the tax guy? I'm pretty upset because I have been fighting a project, some of these people know about an airport I own. Took me 15 years to get them to honor state law, excuse me. Then I had to fight them in the planning department tooth and nail, which cost me a lot of money. Finally got it approved. It was signed a month ago, after five years. So I guess you can understand why I'm upset. I have legal, I gave the county appraiser, when she calls me and she said, "Oh, you've got a mobile home that's illegally placed." And I said, "Ma'am, here's the permit numbers." And I said, "It's a 1973 mobile home. It's not worth anything." "Oh, yes, it is." Fine. But that letter threatened me. And I'm here to ask what's going on in this county. Does the tax department not have to deal with the planning and building department? You've got to understand, that trailer was put in in 1999 legally, and it's signed off by Cal, the permit guy. What's wrong? What do I do? How much more is the county going to harass me?
Thank you, Con.
I mean, I'm very serious. I don't know what to do. I hope you people can do something, because I don't plan on, if I have to answer that attorney, it's going to be a different way. You want a copy of that?
I think I'd like one, yeah. Thank you. Next, we have Laura Magnusson. Okay. All right. Then we have Cassie Peters.
I just wanted to make some comments regarding ordinance 1508, and just to urge the board to look at the recommendations that the planning committee has made, and to take a broad approach to these regulations. There are a lot of people who already have businesses in some of the zones that are proposing to restrict marijuana businesses in, who are growing for medical purposes, or have maybe invested to grow for the new recreational market. And I want to urge the board to take an approach that will allow those businesses to continue, specifically with setbacks. Some of the setback requirements, including the 30-foot setback from property lines, there are already existing businesses that are producing within smaller setbacks than that. And I hope that the board will consider allowing those businesses to continue if they choose to switch from marijuana, medical use to the new recreational use. And also to consider allowing business, existing businesses who are operating with setbacks, or with a smaller setback than that, to potentially partition a structure so that they can still use an existing building, so that they don't have to lose their existing investment. I also have concerns about a blanket ban on all activities within the Chapter 10 zones. I think that there are also people within those zones who may be engaged in production of medical marijuana right now, and interested in moving into the recreational market, which will likely take over the medical market in the years to come. And I hope that the board here sees that this is an opportunity, an economic opportunity for smaller communities and rural communities to have economic opportunity. And I hope that you consider that when you make your decisions. Thanks.
Thank you. And I believe there were a couple people that just didn't quite get here in time to sign the sheet, so if you want to step forward, state your name for the record and where you're from, and then you get your three minutes.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Trey Willison. I'm from Eugene, Oregon, and I have a business in Springfield, Oregon. I'm here to speak to you about F2 zoning and extraction. This letter goes over a lot of it, but basically I have a cannabis production business and also an extraction business. I'm looking to move it forward into recreational from medical. And there may be some difficulties putting the extraction on my F2 zone along with my production zone, so. We already submitted this, a lot of this letter to the zoning commission, but we've added a few things that we feel are important, such as on page four, that may apply the F2 similar to F1 for extraction.
Trey, if I can just ask, is this the same letter you sent me this morning?
Yes, it is, sir.
I did copy the entire board and Mark Rust, so it would get into the record.
Oh, excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
May I use my wife's time a minute?
We've got a really packed agenda this morning, Con.
We've got one other thing to break up. It'll be real quick.
I, I, sorry, Con. It's just, we're running hard. I will take a look at that letter, and we'll get back to you shortly.
It has to do with the ground lease.
Yeah. So, and, oh, did you also want to speak? I'm sorry.
Please, just one clarification on the letter. So just, my name's Lauren Yang. I'm also with Eugenius Vapers. And just to clarify on this letter, so a letter was, a similar letter was submitted to the planning commission at the public hearing, and we've had discussions with Mark Rest as well. And he's informed us a little bit about the discussions and the subsequent discussions that they had, where the, I guess there's another revised table that's now before you that's in the ordinance that prohibits the, excuse me, the processing use in the F2 zone. And prior to that, Mark had said, "Yeah, we think we can put that in there along with the farm, in the farm zone, as well as the forest zone." However, he was referencing different statutes in the ORS as well as the OAS. And after looking at it, that's why we referenced page four, because we believe that this OAR 660060050, that would allow, again, any use authorized in an exclusive farm use zone would also be allowed in agricultural forest zone, should also apply. So we would definitely ask your consideration of that part as well, again, in light of, you know, allowing, excuse me, the processing use in the forest zone. So thank you.
So if there's no further public comment, move on in the agenda here and get to county administration announcements. Oh, sorry, consent calendar. Whoops.
Response.
Response. Oh, response, sorry. I flipped the page. I apologize, folks.
I never did that.
Yeah, yeah. Response to public comment. Any response or remonstrance from the Commissioners? Mr. Farr.
For the record, I did that quite often. Lost a page somewhere. Mr. Marka Highsky, just a question regarding, we had just under the agenda 12A, 12B. 12B is the, is 1508, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that'll be taken up at 1:30 today?
Yes.
And at that point in time, I'll probably talk about how do we get this, the language regarding F2 into this first reading in order for us to consider it when, consider it before. We really have a deadline. We can talk about that later, which, as far as getting the ordinance passed. So I'll have a little bit of discussion regarding that at 1:30. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stewart, thanks, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Marka Highsky, I noticed that you spoke with Mr. Magnusson. I haven't seen the letter, but appreciate a copy of that myself. And then maybe an update on that situation would be appropriate in the future as to how it's being addressed, and then some of the challenges that I'm sure that are around that. So I'd appreciate an update if possible.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have copies of the letter made, and I will follow up with the assessor as well as our land management staff. If a meeting is in order, then we will have a meeting, and then I'll report back to the board either next week or the week after when we have an update for you. Thank you.
I had it. I just flipped the page under. Thanks, Diana. Any other Commissioners' response? I will, I will note, Mr. Magnusson, that this is not the only issue he's had with the county, and I've helped him with several, not the least of which is a county road crew tore out his property corner and then was refusing to replace it because they thought they couldn't get a wetland permit, and they tore it out while doing ditch work on the ditch they said was a wetland. So he's had a little bit of frustration with county crews. Any emergency business today?
No.
And then we'll move on to consent calendars. And the consent calendar is available online, along with the additional materials. There are motion to approve consent calendar.
Chair, so moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we can move on to announcements.
We can. Sorry for flipping the page. We've got a few minutes, and I'm sorry, I'm just pulling through my. Commissioners, I wanted to provide you with two updates. The, we may or may not have time for all three. The first is related to the Fernridge Public Safety District. We said that we would provide the board an update on that, so I'll give you a brief one. And this is a fluid process. We will be in front of the board next week. There's an item that's tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday to discuss the boundary and the proposal for the Fernridge Public Safety District. In terms of boundary development, election staff has been able to come to agreement with the proponents of the initiative, the initial proposal for the district included 10 precincts, and we're now at eight precincts. There were a number of small carve-outs that were at issue, but those have, those have been resolved. Currently, ANT Assessment Taxation staff are working to determine a final valuation of the proposed district, and public works staff are working on the legal description of the area. So, you know, overall, I would just say we've got a lot of staff between assessment taxation, public works, budget staff, legal counsel, all working on these issues. In terms of budget development, the proposed budget for the district is now under review. There have been conversations between assessment taxation, our budget office, and the proponents about that. And there's still conversations that are ongoing about the appropriate projection for property tax increases in future years, as well as expense, expenses for the district, and how to project those out. But I believe that's progressing. I believe that the goal is to keep the rate under $2, and that's what the proponents are shooting for. The, in terms of intergovernmental agreements, the proponents continue to negotiate a way forward for the city of Veneta, so some of this hinges around the need for the city of Veneta to reduce its permanent property tax rate in order to allow for a district-wide rate that would incorporate the city of Veneta, property taxpayers. The city of Veneta appears to be willing to reduce its permanent rate. And again, Commissioner Bozovic or others may have a further update on this. But the city of Veneta appears to be willing to reduce their permit rate by an amount equivalent to its current tax rate for the public safety services that it currently pays. I believe it's around $800,000 that are contributed to Lane County for public safety services within the city's boundary, through a contract, in order to eliminate the compression concerns that exist. So work is ongoing on that front. The one item I wanted to bring to the board's attention and just ask for your guidance on is in relation to a community survey. We have, our staff has contemplated and evaluated the feasibility of performing approximately a seven-minute survey. We'd engage a consultant to do this with a representative sample of the approximate 12,000 proposed district residents and the registered voters in that area. The survey would be designed to inform proponents of the issues related to the price point and the values, and allowing us to craft an effective informational campaign, or the proponents of the initiative craft an informational campaign leading up to the May election. So this is something that it would cost, you know, probably under $10,000 to do. We've done it before, as you know. When the county has gone out for initiatives, this is driven by a citizen group that has asked the board to do it, but ultimately the board is going to be responsible to place it on the ballot. So a question for you that I'll let you contemplate as I go through the last item of cost. Election staff estimate that the district's share of the primary election will be approximately $40,000 based on voter turnout, and expect to be somewhat higher due to the new motor-voter law. The community survey work, as I mentioned, would be, we believe, under $10,000, around $9,000. Costs related to the boundary development are estimated to be $10,000. Other costs to date, including general formation research and meetings, are estimated not to exceed $10,000. The proponents of the initiative have built about $100,000 in their budget for reimbursement purposes. So I glossed over a lot of things. I don't want, we don't have time for too much detail, but I want to give you that brief update. If you have a strong feeling about the community survey, you know, I didn't want to go out and invest in doing a survey of voters if the board doesn't find value in doing that, so I would like direction on that one.
Any questions or comments on that? Think there's no objection up here.
Okay. The board's comfortable, you're, you'd like to see some voter survey information that would either support or not support the initiative. And the idea would be in advance of when you would make a decision to put it on the ballot. Okay.
Information is always good.
Okay. I have, I can do, I think, a quick, do you want me to do that, or do you want to take the 10 o'clock?
Well, we have it as a little bit flexing, as long as I think Lincoln and Greg can bear with us for a minute.
A quick update on the Sixon Oak Annex Property Redevelopment Project, and I'll just remind you of the process. In October 2012, the county issued a request for proposals to look at development of those parcels. In February of 2013, the board reviewed the proposals that were submitted to the RFP. On November, in November of 2013, the board considered an order delegating authority to the county minister to execute ground leases, agreements with HACSA and the Market District LLC for the subject properties. LLC for the subject properties. And then on October, I'm sorry, on November 11th, November 12th, 2013, a public hearing was held, and the board executed the ground leases, or delegated authority to the administrator to execute the ground leases. The lease option agreements were executed December 13th of 2013. Three public meetings were held in August, around August of 2014, and design guidelines were submitted and ultimately approved by the board for the project. The, the lease, there is currently a 48-month ground lease option with an option to enter into a 99-year ground lease. There are a number of conditions that have to be met by both HACSA and the Market District, including completion of environmental assessment, the three public forums that I referenced, design guidelines submitted and approved, use and development plan, and application for building permits in order to ex, or to enter into the potential for the 99-year ground lease, and a number of other conditions that are required as part of the development project and that 99-year ground lease. The lease, the 48-month lease option comes with costs, a monthly cost both for HACSA and the Market District, $1,300 a month for HACSA, and $2,000 a month for the Market District. And then the 99-year lease, it comes at a cost of approximately $1.3 million upon closing for HACSA, and the Market District is structured differently, where there's a 3% of land value for the first five years, 5% of land value annually after the first five years, and then it's adjusted in five-year increments after that. At the end of the ground lease term, the 99-year ground lease term, the ownership of the improvements transferred to the county at known cost. So this is the way that this RFP and process was structured when the county initially conducted it in 2012. We recently received letters from HACSA and the Market District requesting the county to consider an alternative which would look at the potential for a purchase of the property, rather than a long-term lease of the property. And we want to go through a process to first have a conversation with the board, and so I wanted to just bring that to your attention here today, let you know that we're suggesting scheduling an executive session to have that conversation with the board. And anything that results from that executive session and those conversations will, that would result in any contemplation of a change in process would require an extensive public, public process and public meetings and decisions and actions by the board. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention today, not asking for necessarily conversation or feedback, although I would like to know if you, if anyone has concerns with having the conversation in executive session, starting there, and then depending on the feedback that we receive from the board, bringing it forward to potential future public conversations. Any objections to having a conversation in exec session? So we'll schedule that. The only other item then, and I think maybe what we could do, Mr. Chair, since we have folks here for the 10 o'clock, if you don't mind just coming back where there's a slot, I did want to, I don't want to keep our guests waiting on the presentation that they have, but you may or may not know that Glenda Polling is retiring this month, and this is the last board meeting where we have an item for economic development, is, at least to my knowledge. And so we wanted to take a few minutes to recognize her, so if we can come back to, to county administrator announcements when the time is appropriate.
Will do. So with that, then, we'll move on to item 6B, which is a report on the forest land classification process, and we have Link Smith and Greg Waggonblast from the Oregon Department of Forestry here, and I will turn it over to you guys.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for entertaining us for this morning and letting us present this to you. We came to you guys this last spring and introduced you guys to forest land classification, and so today we're here to make the official, official request for your support to move forward with forest land classification. So we've got a brief PowerPoint. You've got two handouts. One is just a summary on the ins and outs of forest land classification, and then there's a frequently asked question list that I also provided you. And then Chairman Bozovich, I also provided you the official letter of our request to be able to move forward with that. So basically, we'll run through this PowerPoint real quick. It goes over things. So we, Oregon Department of Forestry and our associations that we're, we work with closely have been providing wildland fire protection within Lane County for over 100 years. The lands that are protected are with, within our boundaries, so we have set boundaries for our districts. We don't encompass the entire county, but both Western Lane District and South Cascade District cover the foothills out to the valley fringe, and there is a boundary that is set there. So all the lands within our boundaries have to be, would be classified. Things that are outside it are not classified and protected at this time. Forest land classification, basically what it does is it sets up the, the per acre fire costs we charge, or it's an assessment that's charged to property owners. And what that does is it provides the funding for the Department of Forestry, the two districts, to, to be able to provide that fire protection within our boundaries. What somebody gets, a landowner gets with that is they get our district regular cost of resources that are out there, which would be all of our, our staff, our fire trucks, our dozers, water tenders, that kind of thing. It also then provides for extra resources to be able to be brought in, which would include dozers, contract engines, crews, helicopters, retardant planes. And with that, if there is a large fire event that does occur, we have an emergency fire fund that we're able to tap into, which is different than what the rural fire departments have. You know, they've got a set budget. They don't have the, the resources that, that we do as an agency and the ability to tap into that emergency fire fund like we do. So history on this, basically, classification identifies lands, the lands with the vegetation type that we're going to be looking at would be forest lands. We don't necessarily provide that protection to agriculture lands, things like that, that don't have wildland fuels on it. The forest land classification process is outlined under ORS 526, and right now, this would be the first major time that we officially would be classifying, setting up a committee and doing this, this classification. The districts have been managing things with the assessor's office over the years, but as far as we know, this is the first official time that a committee has actually been set up to, to go through this whole process. This gives you, it doesn't show up very well, but it's trying to show you guys our two district boundaries, and you can see pretty much in the center there, the valley fringe is really what's not protected. So we don't get inside the cities of Springfield, Eugene, or down on the valley floor very far. There are bits and pieces of both Eugene and Springfield that we do provide a little bit of protection, and same thing up in Oak Ridge. We've got a little bit on the valley for the, the edge of the city there, but we don't get into the, the center of the city.
You'll also notice we don't protect the forest, US Forest Service, so the big green blocks within the county are forest service protected.
This is a long definition of what we consider forest land. Basically, what it is, is if it's got some kind of vegetation on it that's going to carry fire during the year, it could be classified as forest land. And so this would be a definition that the committee would utilize to work through the process to determine what should be classified as forest land and what should not be. This is just a diagram to indicate it would be forest land versus what rangeland is. This process is statewide, so it doesn't, you know, it does apply over on the, on the east side of the crest, and it does apply down in southern Oregon, and both places have what we consider grazing land. Up here in, from basically Douglas County, the northern edge of Douglas County, Lane County line north, there is not any grazing land classified in the state right now, so it would all be forest land. Another diagram here just to demonstrate, you know, the, the thoughts of, of where ODF is versus the city fire departments versus the rural fire departments and getting involved in the urban interface areas. We, we've got that interface area that we are involved with, with the rural fire departments. Purpose of forest land classification is really threefold. It's to develop an accurate classification process and then work with the assessor to make sure that we've got the, the assessment rules set and established correctly. It's to develop equity among our forest landowners that are out there within the county. And then it's also to allow involvement of, you know, landowners, the fire departments, the county government, and that's why we're here today with you guys, is to, to ask for your support and to be able to move forward with that. It does not really, when you, you know, some people think about it as, you know, we may be adding some properties and that kind of thing, which are going to increase our budget. It does not work that way. Link puts together a budget on his side for Western Lane. I've got one on our side for South Cascade, and the budget is what it is. So if it's, you know, $2 million budget, that gets divided among the number of acres that we protect. So bringing in more acres, all that does is it reduces the cost per acre that a landowner is going to be paying. It does not increase our, you know, our budget whatsoever as to, you know, adding extra income coming into it. So what we're going to be asking is this classification committee to be established, and it's made up of six individuals, sorry, I was going to say five. It's similar to like when we came to you guys and, and asked about doing Senate Bill 360. So what we would be asking of, of you folks is we would like to have three, you guys want to support us moving forward. You guys would then appoint three people to the committee, one of which needs to be a forest landowner. The other two could be at-large, preferably if they're forest landowners or landowners within our districts that would be affected. And then also on that committee, OSU Extension will appoint one person, State Fire Marshal will appoint one person, and the State Forester will appoint an individual as well. Okay, so the process is going to be, we're going to form a committee. It's, we're estimating it's going to take us about a year and a half or so to get it accomplished. What we will do is ODF will have our GIS folks and support staff that will support the committee, and the committee will then review that information that's edits and things are presented to them. At that point, we'll have some public, public education meetings, and ultimately then a public hearing that will result in moving forward with that. A notification for affected landowners will be then sent out to those individuals that are not currently paying fire patrol assessment, but would be added to having fire patrol assessment based on what the committee determines. And then, and that, we've got a specific timeline that we've got to meet to, to provide that notice by March of the year for the taxes. So that's why we really think it's going to take us about a year and a half or so, you know, to, to get through this process and be able to meet those deadlines. This is a diagram, just a flow chart, and it's in your handouts of how the committee would actually work through the process to determine if a piece of property should be paying fire patrol assessment or not. And as you'll see in there, you know, it's going to involve looking, looking at a lot of different components and then also communication with the, the fire departments that would be affected as well. So the role of the committee, you know, they're going to provide input on fire protection and where the, within our protection boundaries. They're going to examine forest land within Lane County here. They're going to develop and support recommendations that they're going to then provide to us on implementing consistent standards and practices for the land classification. So they'll, they'll set up some internal controls and stuff with, within their, their committee there, and they're going to determine what should be paying fire patrol, what would be classified as forest land here in Lane County. Also, they're going to be talking with the rural fire departments. You know, we've, we talked with the, the Lane County Fire Defense Board, the fire chiefs there, and so we'll have one person that'll be appointed from the State Fire Marshal's office, which will be more than likely one of the, the local fire chiefs here in Lane County. But that's, that's not the end of it. We're going to want each one of the chiefs that's going to be affected, and I think we counted yesterday 21 rural fire departments within the county, and 20 of those are, are within, between our two districts here. So we'll get the, the fire chiefs involved with it. They'll have conversations on, on their input. We'll be talking with landowners, and then final classification will be filed with the county clerk after we've had the, the public hearing. One of the other things that the committee is going to be looking at too, or we're going to be asking of, is for them to evaluate where our protection boundaries currently exist. We do have some ones that are outside of our boundaries that have timber on it, and there's been some discussions over the last 10 years with some of the fire chiefs and different landowners as to where that boundary currently exists and if maybe some of those lands should be included within our boundaries. And so the committee would be our first opportunity to take a look at where those boundaries are and if they consider, you know, recommending that we should move them or not. And if they did that, that would be a whole separate process that we would go through, but that would be our, our first fold at looking at that. They'll also be looking at the dual assessment areas, so the rural fire, fire departments can be receiving their, providing protection for the structure and up to five acres, and then ODF would be providing protection just on the wildland side. We don't, we do not do any structure protection, so, you know, if a piece of property has a structure on it, that's where the fire departments need to be involved with that as well. The committee would also be part of that interface and represent the county commissioners and the public in this process, so, you know, you guys are going to appoint three people. So, you know, they're really going to, the committee is made up of a, a large number of folks that are going to go through this, so there should be some really good dialogue. It's not ODF trying to do it on our own and, and not include, you know, that dialogue that needs to occur with everybody. The process for the public, we're going to hold, the meetings are open to the public for that committee meetings. There will be officers elected to that committee. With, you know, within the committee, there will be officers elected. They'll have their own bylaws. We've got a standard that they can use and develop from there. Minutes will be recorded, so we'll have somebody recording those, those meetings, so we've got that as record. And then, you know, basically, what their recommendations are going to come down to is developing what we would look at as our fire patrol assessment to determine what properties are being assessed and what ones are not. If somebody's got concerns, you know, they can bring those up to the committee. They can also bring those up at the public hearing and be able to move forward with that. So this is the, the classification process, and I mentioned earlier that we've got to have the letters out to affected landowners by March 1st to be able to, to meet those deadlines. You know, there's a, a formal written order and then a 30-day appeal process that, that folks can use. And our hope is that this committee would be through the process and be able to have everything completed and with the assessor's office have everything filed for the 2017 tax year. And then here, we've just got a couple timelines that, that lay it out. You know, these are just estimates. We'd like to be able to get the committee going here really soon, you know, in the next month or so, and, you know, hopefully end it, wrap it up by, you know, mid-2017. So that is it. So that is it in a quick nutshell for you. So we've given you the, the letter, the official request. We would ask for you guys' support to be able to move forward with that. And then the three appointees that you guys would appoint. And if you guys are, are interested or looking for some names, we do have a few names of some forest landowners within Lane County, both on, in Western Lane and in Eastern Lane County that are interested and willing to sit on that committee if you guys so choose. That's what I've got, so.
The last reality of this, we have tools available now that we didn't have years ago. When you think about GIS in particular to, to really make this, you know, the goal was to make this more equitable is really what it is. So I just want to reemphasize, you know, we, we set a standard for what our cost for protection is. And then again, we divide that out ultimately through the assessment process. And again, we have some tools and personnel available to, to really make this a better process than it's been in the past is what the, the goal is here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. And thank you Greg and Link for being here today and bringing this forward. I think this process is, as a rural representative, this is a very important process that I believe we need to support and be a part of, you know, clarifying those roles and having a clear understanding of who's protecting what and what our responsibilities are. And then also being compensated for that activity that, that you're performing. So I don't know if a motion is needed today. I could make a motion that supports formation of a committee or, or supporting your creation of a committee to go through this classification and direct staff to, to seek out applicants for appointment. I mean, is, is that direction that you would feel comfortable with today?
I, I think that'd be fantastic if that.
I'd like to make that motion then.
I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Liken.
Real quickly, thanks, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would have just get oh what Commissioner Stewart, thank you for, for being here and including this as part of the process. And if, if a commissioner is to be part of this, this committee, I would, I would obviously, I, I believe that it would be, make sense to have a rural commissioner be representative on this if this is the, the will of this, of this board to have a commissioner involved. Also, I, I, the thing I think I appreciate is the fact that we've, in the last couple of years, if you look at the state, we've undergone some pretty significant fire issues. Lane County has actually been somewhat fortunate compared to maybe the eastern side and even Douglas County. And we had a pretty interesting update that we just finished with our Association of Oregon Counties Conference. And then, and it's very interesting to pick the brain, especially of Commissioner Mark Labhart from Tillamook County, who is a former forest fire commander and, and command post. And we were talking about the fact that back many years ago, a large fire may have been two or 3,000 acres. And there's just so much abundance of fuel and the, and, and, you know, that, that's out there that causes these fires that, that have just gone on to hundreds of thousands of acres instead. And I was really, I, I hadn't even, was, I was not aware of the, the tragedy that, that, and it really was a tragedy on eastern Oregon where you had literally 43 homes destroyed. But we're not talking still standing. I mean, they were basically kenneling at the end of the day. And so there was nothing left of them. And then, and I mean, it was really stunning to go through that process. So I, so I really appreciate that. I think this makes a lot of sense and I thank you for including this as part of this. And, um, and I'm just very, very supportive of this. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your presentation too. And as far as the motion goes, I, I think it's great. And I think that appointing a rural commissioner makes a lot of sense. I had a couple of quick questions about some of the slides up there. One was on the, I think it was, maybe I remembered as very large fires are separate from, what, what is that? Give me a little more information on that.
One of the slides there mentioned the emergency fire fund.
Yeah, emergency fire fund.
Thinking there. And so the reality is we have some deductibles we have to meet. But long story short, our daily fires, if we have a five acre, a 10 acre, are paid for and fit within our district budget. However, we have, we all pay into, or part of this assessment process, funds go into the emergency fire fund is, is one of those, I guess, almost like in a, part of our insurance policy so if we don't go bankrupt, so.
Is that something that is part of, of the assessment and collection process? Or does it also involve state legislative funds into this emergency fire fund?
So the emergency fire fund is actually funded by the surcharges on, on the structures that are in, within the wildland urban interface. That's the primary funding mechanism of that. So it builds a pool of money there. So to give you an example, you, you saw last year, I talked about our Yellow Point Fire. It cost us $5.5 million to suppress that. Our budget is only $2 million a year. So what we did, there's a 20, there's a couple of deductibles, not to get into too many details, but if you reach $25,000 a day of my district funds, if you exceed that, you can then make sure you're eligible to tap into those emergency fire fund, which is in the range of 20 to a, a 20 to $30 million fund to help pay for those costs.
Are there legislatively appropriated dollars in the, in either of those funds?
Well, we do.
Or is it all from within districts?
Um, the general fund does pay half of our protection budgets for the, they match the funds that the private landowners pay in the assessment. So if my assessment to you, if we send you an assessment, if you owned 10 acres, let's say it would be $20, just, I'm just throwing around figures here, the general fund on that assessment is 50%. So they pay 50% of that.
Okay.
They do not put money into the emergency fire fund.
Okay.
So it's, it's pretty, to be quite honest with you, I think we have one of the most confusing budgets in the state as far as state agencies.
Yeah.
Because we also have a Lloyd's of London insurance policy.
I'd agree with that. One other question, I asked a lot of questions about, you know, fire risk last time. What was your experience this year?
So we are on the, on your agenda to come back in January, the first part of January to give you a, a fire season update.
Okay.
And then follow up with where we currently stand with the, the forest land classification process. So we didn't want to overwhelm you guys today with us sitting here for a long period of time, but we do have a plan to come back and give you guys a, a report out on the 2000.
15? Yeah, 15.
Fire season.
And I hesitate to use the term last question, but another area, quick areas. Are you contemplating expanding the district? Because I noticed the definition of forest land did include grazing and we seem to be getting a lot more Willamette Valley grazing and just a lot more grazing in general.
I think.
Grazing is part of forest land and yet I, I'm driving up to Salem and seeing fire trucks occasionally all along, along the freeway and there's costs associated with it. And should that be borne entirely by the, by the rural fire district as opposed to being part of a?
That's, that's a question actually our, that this classification committee will help us with, to help determine our district boundaries. The reality is we are the Department of Forestry, you know, more embedded, interested in the forest lands. And when you, you finally get into an area, to use the Willamette Valley as an example, you get in an area where it's just literally grasslands and agricultural lands. To give you another example of that, Douglas County does have separate grazing and forest rates. Obviously, it's a lot cheaper to suppress grasslands and grazing lands than it is to forest lands. So they have different rates, a little more complication on their budget than we have. I don't think you'll see our boundaries changed dramatically. I think you may see them in working with the local fire districts and working with our board of directors, you might see some subtle adjustments. Those aren't easy steps to make.
Yeah.
To, to change those boundaries. But I think, again, this committee, that's going to be, we're hoping one of their roles in addition to once we classify the lands within our boundaries, to actually look at and make sure our boundaries are in there.
What's the timeline for all of this?
We're hoping that we'll have this done by and on the actual tax rolls. The tax rolls, we use the tax rolls just to, as a method for receiving those money, those funds. We send them out with the tax bill, but we hope that would be in 2017.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a pretty good, pretty good sized project, actually.
Thank you very much and thanks for all your great work.
Mr. Farr.
A very quick question. I used to work for the forestry department. When I was in high school, I worked at a company, Halem, which I don't think is a forestry camp anymore. It was a residential camp. We, I worked there for summers in the old Tillamook Burn. The, my question is regarding the contingency fund that you talked about. And I'm, the question, I, I'm hoping that this will be covered when you give us more detail in January. You said the fund that we drew from to fight the, to suppress the Yellow Point Fire was the, was $25 to $30 million, I think is the number that you, you gave.
I believe that's what the fund can be up to. There's a maximum, there's, um, there's a maximum and minimum as part of that fund. And that is one of our large fire cost funding mechanisms that we have.
It's one.
I'd be glad to, we have a couple of pretty good handouts on that that I could certainly ship to you and then we could cover that at another time.
I have a threatening general presentation or subsequent to general.
It is quite, I find it quite interesting.
I'm, I'm very interested.
I don't know if everybody does, but.
I'm, I'm most interested in the exhaustible nature of that fund. You know, if you have a whole lot of yellow point fires or greater fires, more costly fires to suppress, at some point do we completely run out? We don't need to talk about that right now.
And we did completely run out last year and it hit the general fund.
The general fund.
It hit the state general fund because all of our mechanisms, including our Lloyd's of London insurance policy that we also have, we blew through all of that. Was that last year, the year before?
Last year.
I'm sorry. We've had three bad years in a row now. I apologize. But ultimately, those final costs did, we had to go to the emergency board and get some money from the general fund. And that's been, I believe, about the only time that's happened.
That would be an adventure.
Yeah, it's not something we look forward to doing.
No, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That covers my question. Hoping we'll hear more in, when we get a longer presentation. Thank you.
And I didn't get a final answer, or I didn't, would you like us to go ahead and send you a couple of names and a couple of recommendations?
Yeah, I was going to cover that when I, I was going to ask, when, when I get to my turn in discussion, I was going to say, hopefully your staff will work with our staff in, in providing some names. I know your association boards have lots of good members that would probably be willing to serve on this committee. Seeing we have to get at least one forest landowner or representative thereof, you guys work with those guys all the time. So I, I appreciate your, your help in helping us recruit those members for the, that we have to appoint to the committee. And I'm sure our staff can work together. I don't think that our motion is going to preclude that. So other than just to mention, I wish you guys also fought on forest service lands. I like the way you guys fight better than the Forest Service does.
We got some.
Is there any further discussion in the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
So moving on to our next time certain item, which is Item 6C, Order and Resolution 15120104 in the matter of approving the transfer of $100,000 from contingency to materials and services when the, within the general expense service revenue fund 260 and approving an allocation of up to $100,000 for Project New Deal for the purpose of assisting with the cost of infrastructure improvement. And it looks like we have Sarah Case, our Economic Development Officer, and I hope you will introduce the gentleman on your left here in a moment.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to provide a couple introductory comments here and then I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Great.
And our guest who is wearing a wonderful shirt that we now are becoming familiar here with the name of this company. But I wanted to just start off by, by recognizing the fact that Lane County's economic development is committed to economic development in the region. We have a highly trained and knowledgeable staff, as you all know and appreciate. We participate in projects such as the recent Avago purchase of the Heineck's facility, which we're all excited about. The board has been supportive of business expansion and relocations, including IP, the IP international paper expansion, Swanson Mill retention, investments in Rain and Fertile Lab. We also play a significant role in local business development and business recruitment. We emphasize our efforts as the board has prioritized on our traded sector manufacturing companies. And we focus on offering quality jobs and increasing our local tax base as well as the median income in Lane County. We're also keenly aware of emerging trends in the market. Lane County has a particular focus, in addition to the metro area, on rural economic development. Over the past six months, as the board knows, we've employed two Hatfield fellows that are doing outstanding work in rural Lane County, up the Mackenzie River and on the coast in Florence and working with our rural partners. Over the past two years, the board has provided financial support to 20 businesses utilizing video lottery funds that are restricted for investment in economic development purposes, primarily existing Lane County businesses, but in some cases, relocations that we'll be talking about here today. The investments the board has made of video lottery funds total approximately $1.1 million and have helped facilitate the creation or retention of over 1,000 jobs in the past two years. That's an average of under $1,200 per job in Lane County. The companies that we've supported are generally in the traded sector area and provide jobs that exceed the average annual wage for Lane County. So we are achieving one of the board's priorities, which is to lift the median income in our community. I also want to thank our staff and recognize here the fact that it's often difficult with high-profile recruitments like this, that everyone is excited about and rumors fly around, to respect the sensitivity of these deals. And to my knowledge, this company had been working up until late yesterday to close on the deal, which is why there was a, a significant amount of sensitivity around that. And our staff and our organization did, I think, an outstanding job of respecting the need for that sensitivity word. You know, there are a lot of folks involved in, in these deals and so word tends to creep out, but really appreciate that our staff was able to respect that. Had a conversation yesterday with Commissioner Liken about the impact sometimes to businesses and the importance of demonstrating how much we can be trusted as an organization and as a community in welcoming a new business to our area. So I, I'd like to, on behalf of Lane County, welcome this new business, an industry that has roots here in our community. And I'll turn it over to Sarah to share more with you.
Thank you, Steve. Chair Baltovic and Commissioners, it's my pleasure to bring this board item to you today. We have been working with Project New Deal for about six months now. When they picked up the phone and called us and, and then we responded. As Steve mentioned, this is a traded sector manufacturing company, what we like to work with primarily because they come in, they create high-wage jobs and increase the local tax base. Project New Deal found a location in Junction City to meet their needs and we're very excited about that. Not only is it a traded sector manufacturing company coming in to build local tax base, but they're doing it in rural Lane County. Project New Deal is looking to employ up to 200 employees at the Junction City location. And I should also mention that they're looking to potentially retain 35 jobs that already exist there. The hourly wages will range from $16 to $20 an hour, while salary, salary ranges will range from $45,000 to $125,000 a year. And I should note that the Lane County average hourly wage is $16.35, while the average annual salary in Lane County is $38,000. So these jobs will well exceed what our averages are here in the county. Total investment of the project is between, estimated between $15 and $20 million for land building and other improvements. Project New Deal has requested assistance from, or excuse me, with infrastructure upgrades to the facility in Junction City. The BCC, the board, you are being asked to re, to consider a $100,000 request. Staff has been working with the company to determine the highest and best use of these funds. If the board should agree to approve this request, staff will continue to work with the company to vet the project and ensure that it is an appropriate and highest and best use of the fund. It's very critical to note, you all know this, but I think it's important to reiterate that the funding coming, that's in question for this request is video lottery funding. The video lottery funding is statutorily obligated to be used for economic development purposes. Economic development is defined within the statutes here in the state of Oregon and this is clearly an economic development purpose. It is. this is clearly an economic development purpose. It is what this fund is to be used for. I would be remiss if I didn't, um, acknowledge the partner organizations that we have here in Lane County. This is certainly a team effort. Not one organization, um, brings these things home, if you will. We, um, rely on one another to make sure that we put forward, um, the best opportunity and, um, for companies looking at Lane County. So, um, at the table for this Project New Deal, we had Business Oregon, who is also considering a financial package. We also had Lane Workforce Partnership, who, um, I just hot off the presses, um, have been told that they are also, um, looking at approving a training fund request for the company as a result of the thirty-five retained jobs at the site. So both, um, representatives from Business Oregon and Lane Workforce Partnership are here today and wanna make sure we acknowledge that, um, this is not just Lane County coming to the table. This is three partner organizations, um, who do really great work in economic development, making sure that this becomes a success and a win for our community. So with all of this information, I'd like to formally introduce Project New Deal as Winnebago Industries. Here with us today is Scott Folkers, the Vice President, General Counsel, and Secretary, and I'd like to invite him to say a few words.
Well, I appreciate being here today. Uh, you know, usually they don't let the attorney out of the room. I'm the guy that tells what, everybody else what they can say, as opposed to the face of the company. So, uh, it's, it's really a pleasure for, for me to be here today. It was a little bit of a trip getting here yesterday. The snowstorms back in the Midwest and in, in Colorado were really cobbling things up as far as the airlines were concerned. So I spent some quality time in the Seattle Airport, wandering back and forth trying to get on a standby flight because I missed my flight to Portland by two minutes. Uh, so, I did finally arrive, and actually the, we just finished up the, the paperwork on the property in Junction City this morning. I was there before I came over here, 'cause I got in too late to get it done yesterday. But all of that should be recorded here shortly, uh, with a little bit of luck. So we're, we're hopeful that, uh, to get this thing up and running, and we're very appreciative of all the support that we've gotten from, uh, the county, Junction City, and, and the state. And really looking forward to getting up and running here in Oregon and, uh, bringing jobs and, and hopefully, uh, bringing the Winnebago tradition to this part of the world.
So with that, um, I'm certain there are probably questions you'd like to ask us. Both Scott and I and Steve are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Well, I, I wanna be the first really to extend a welcome to Scott and Winnebago. Junction City is in my district, and, um, adding two hundred jobs to a town of five thousand people and family wage jobs in manufacturing is a big deal for rural Lane County. And I just wanna appreciate, and, you know, the property you're purchasing is a prior facility that was used for, uh, RV manufacturing, so it's great to see that facility get reutilized. At the same time, there's a workforce out there from the, the previous, uh, industry in this area. I think you'll find it's readily available and, and should really help you out. So I think it can be a great partnership. But with that, I'll turn it over to my fellow commissioners for any questions or comments. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question. Sarah, uh, welcome, Scott. Uh, welcome to Lane County. Great place to be, even if you're only visiting here from time to time. There are no finer places on earth to visit. You've, uh, if you wanna see pictures, I have a full album. Um, and welcome.
Thank you.
You know, my first job in Lane County was in Junction City at AgriPac. There used to be a, uh, green bean cannery out there. I spent a lot of, a lot of my summers, days and nights in, in Junction City. Great community, uh, very great, uh, very good community to be in, to be involved with. You mentioned, Sarah, that, uh, this is a, a partnership. And that really is important, that, um, that we're in partnership, not just with your private industry, but with other, uh, other, um, public agencies. And that you'd mentioned Lane Workforce Partnership and, uh, and Business Oregon. Uh, question about the city of Junction City. Um, you'd thanked them. How is Junction City helping with that?
So, um, we are currently working through enterprise zone, um, processes. Uh, City of Junction City has an enterprise zone that is actually managed by the City of Harrisburg City Manager. It's a little interesting. Um, so we've been working, um, with them through that process. Um, so they've certainly been aware and involved.
Excellent. I was, I'm glad to hear that. I think, um, once again, Commissioner Bozovich mentioned there is a workforce out there, not just in the city of Junction City. It's a great deal of commuting that occurs back and forth, uh, you know, from other communities, not just Eugene and Springfield, but from Harrisburg also. So welcome once again to Lane County. I, uh, I did not know who you were gonna be today until I read the paper this morning. Thank you. Welcome.
Commissioner Lykan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, I wanna also express my welcome to you as well, and thank you for the investment in Lane County and Junction City in particular. Couple of questions. Um, I actually admire your company because when you look around, especially during the Great Recession, uh, you're one of those RV manufacturers that actually were, stayed afloat and were able to weather the storm in a sense, and where we saw some, what I call some outstanding RV manufacturers that, that did not. And that, in fact, we felt it'd be a huge issue here locally because of the challenges that were involved. Maybe if you could maybe talk about how Winnebago was able to weather the storm, because to me, I, I think that that, that in itself sends a really positive message about what kinda company is locating here in Lane County, and how were you able to, because that was, that Great Recession was very significant, especially to any, any organizer or company involved with, uh, transportation, uh, related type, or, or the recreational type of, of industry. So maybe if you could just expand on that, just a little bit about how, and again, I, I just wanted to express, I think that's a really key component. You're able to weather the storm, and you're making an investment here, and I think we should all be very appreciative of that.
Thank you. I appreciate the welcome. Winnebago has always been a conservatively managed company. One of the things that served us well coming through the recession was the fact that we had, uh, virtually no debt. So, uh, we were able to kinda hunker down. Basically, we, uh, reduced our workforce rather dramatically. We went from a workforce of roughly forty-two hundred down to roughly nineteen hundred employees. Uh, we, uh, shut down some facilities for a period of time, uh, and dramatically reduced our, our output, and figured out ways to get a whole lot leaner during that, during that process. So, you know, other companies were not as fortunate. It was a, it was a tough time for any company that's producing a high-end, uh, consumer discretionary product. Uh, I, I think everybody at Winnebago, uh, was very happy that we were able to survive that and that the recession finally ended when it did. And, uh, we, the, the industry as a whole has recovered fairly nicely, and, and Winnebago has certainly made a comeback. And that's one of the reasons that we looked at Oregon. We need more capacity. We simply, uh, for, for where our product is at right now, we don't have the capacity in Forest City, Iowa, to build as many units as what the, uh, consumers are demanding. We're happy, we're happy to be coming. We're happy to, uh, be looking someplace that has a workforce like, uh, Lane County does and, and Junction City in particular.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that very much. I, I just think that that's, uh, I, I, I just strongly believe that, that, that's such a significant piece of this, of this whole story, is how you were able to overcome, and, and here you are making another, uh, what I would call a significant investment here in Lane County, and much appreciated. And that, now, the big question, of course, is Hawkeyes or Cyclones?
Hawkeyes.
All right. So, uh, I just, you know, I, I.
No, I'm probably in the minority at Winnebago because we seem to be on the west side of I-35, which usually indicates that you're a cyclone person. But, uh, I'm a graduate of undergrad, uh, from the University of Iowa.
Oh, great football season this year, but of course Iowa State has a great basketball program, so.
They do, and Iowa's looking a little backseat there this year. I don't know. We'll, we'll see what my good friend Fran McCaffrey can do for us.
Well, good. I, I wanna make sure we got that very important question out there, and, uh, we had a down year. We only went nine and three. So anyway, thanks.
And now you're gonna be in Junction City, which has truly got the platypus thing going on there.
Yeah, very much so.
Yeah, they're kinda halfway up the corvallis there, so there's a fair amount of beaver stands. In fact, the, your, your neighbor, you know, over there at Guaranty has kind of a father-son thing going on about that. So, Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Scott. Um, you know, as I, I look at this news today, this is, this is great news for the citizens of Lane County and the folks that live around here. Um, last three weeks, we've been able to be a part of seeing, um, you know, potentially up to upwards of five hundred jobs that are gonna be coming into this area in the next year, year and a half. And so it's, um, exciting for the opportunities that our citizens are gonna have before us. And for me, um, when I first became a commissioner about eleven years ago, we were, uh, we'd like to think we were one of the motor, motor coach capital of, of the United States with, uh, Marathon and Monaco and Country Coach here working away. And, uh, it, um, we went through a, a pretty big setback, losing a couple of those and drastically downsizing. So I'm, I'm very thankful that, um, you chose to, um, bring your company here to, you know, hopefully revitalize that, 'cause we, we do have a skilled workforce here that, um, I'm confident that, um, will be able to meet your needs, uh, to continue the Winnebago tradition. So, thank you very much for that. And I, I also wanna thank staff and our partners, the state, the city, Junction City, Workforce Partnership. Um, you know, it's clear, these, these projects wouldn't come together without all those supports. So, thank you so much for the great work that, um, our staff's done.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Um, welcome, and, uh, thanks very much for investing in our community. Um, this community is, is struggling in terms of Lane County and our population and the level of, of, um, of hunger and level of unemployment and, uh, wage structure. So bringing jobs that people can, uh, do and, and, and invest in their own families and their own community, I think is really important, and I wanna thank you.
So with that, is there a motion to approve the order? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Stewart.
I'd like to move approval of order fifteen dash twelve dash zero one dash zero four in the matter of approving the transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from contingency, contingency to materials and services within the General Expense Special Revenue Fund 260, and approving an allocation up to a hundred thousand dollars for Project New Deal, i.e. Winnebago.
Sarah, second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Farr.
Just a, a quick question and clarification. Uh, the order, as stated in the agenda today, uh, says the, the, uh, the money is within the General Expense Special Revenue Fund 260. Just a brief.
That is, that is our, that's our special fund. The, um, video lottery fund. It's in, um, that particular.
So people reading the, uh, the agenda item, the.
Has nothing to do, yes. It's, 260 is the key term there.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lykan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the question I meant to ask Sarah on this, and, uh, that I see Sean's here from, from Business Oregon. Is Business Oregon also being a partner in this as far as providing potential incentives, or what's, what's the role that Business Oregon will be involved in, in this, in this project?
Yeah, yes. Um, Business Oregon is, nothing has been finalized, to my knowledge, um, but they are considering, um, a financial package, um, that is in the works.
I kinda figured that. I'm, I'm assuming Sean may have had something else to do today, and, and the fact that he's here, I think, sends a positive message. Very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that, I'm gonna jump back to county administration announcements, and I think, Mr. Mokhaiske, you wanted to finish something up here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, invite, where's Glenda? Glenda here? Come on up here. Greg, if you wanna come up too. I just wanna take a minute, uh, mention that Glenda Polling is retiring from Lane County this month, and this is her last board meeting. Um, Glenda started in Lane County in two thousand and eleven, uh, but she's worked in economic development for twenty years, and it's not surprising, given the quality of the work that, uh, that she's done here. She is a remarkable team member. She said, "Don't make me cry." That was wrong, I promise. But, uh, she's a remarkable team member, an extraordinary mentor. You saw that, I mean, not a surprise at all that Sarah Case was up here. Uh, Glenda was involved in this, uh, project, uh, with Winnebago, but she asked Sarah to come up because she said, you know, this is, uh, Sarah's been involved too, and she wanted Sarah to present. She's done just an outstanding job. Uh, she doesn't always have to be the person out in front. Um, she doesn't like to always take the credit, but she does as much of the work as anybody else. She's a problem solver. I'll tell you, she's never come to my office with a problem she isn't capable of solving and that she hasn't brought a solution in hand with, which is really important to me. An outstanding partner. Um, I've seen this particularly on the SWEDCO board. Commissioner Lykan is on the SWEDCO board, working with our regional partners in the cities and the chambers. She just, she understands relationships really well. Uh, people respect her in the community and among our partners. Uh, we're gonna miss her. We're gonna miss her very much. Um, everyone's replaceable, um, but not necessarily at the same level. And, uh, so I wanna just thank Glenda for all the work that you've done, uh, way before, you know, my time here. I really appreciate that I was able to walk in to this organization and have people like Glenda who are sitting here, uh, doing outstanding work and have just continued doing it. And, um, so she's earned, uh, the opportunity to move on, and our task, uh, that's in front of us will be to try to replace her with an outstanding person who can continue the great work, uh, that we're doing. I'll ask Greg if he has anything to say, and then I wanna allow commissioners, if you have anything you wanna add.
At this point, just thank you. Thank you for your service, and it will be remarkably difficult to replace you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Well, Glenda, I wanna, I wanna say thank you, um, from the bottom of my heart. Um, you know what you faced when you came to the county and, uh, the hard work that you had to, to deal with in challenging times. I mean, you had to get us all kinda sorted out, straightened out, helped us, uh, the board adopt, um, some guidelines and some criteria for, um, as we make investments in the community. Um, the administrator read off a wonderful list of accomplishments for this last two years and, and Glenda, that was due to you and your staff's, um, great guidance. I mean, a thousand jobs with, um, one point one million dollars invested. Um, the communities, the work that you've done, whether it's been up the McKenzie, or whether it's down in Cottage Grove, and, you know, um, when deals didn't quite look like they were moving forward, uh, switched gears and found other communities that, um, met the criteria and been able to keep them here in Lane County. So I, I just, um, I can't thank you enough for the work that you've done and, uh, and where you've brought economic development in Lane County, and, and hopefully will pick the right person to, to move us forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson.
I wanted to thank you, Glenda, for all your hard work here, and, and especially your leadership, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lykan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Glenda, thank you so much, and I know you wanna go off to be a grandma. I don't get that.
I do.
But anyway, um, uh, just kidding. Um, actually, Glenda and George have been close friends of mine for, for many years. And, and so I, uh, it's gonna be, it's a sad day, but at the same time, I must say, I think Steve mentioned something earlier about mentorship. I, it's been fun to watch Sarah's explosive growth here as well. And, uh, and I, it, and I, and I attribute a lot of that to not only yourself, but, but I think also to the fact that, uh, just the fact we have such professional staff here, and I, and I really wanna say thank you for that. Uh, you know, Glenda, Glenda was part of the Eugene-Springfield Metro Partnership when she was involved in a project called Big Fish that landed in, uh, Springfield many years ago. And of course, was the Sony Corporation, which the catalyst to what we call the thousands and thousands of jobs located in the Gateway area and the millions of dollars in infrastructure that was invested there. And I don't know if folks realize that, but Glenda was part of John Lively's team that recruited and cited Sony here that began this whole tech process that really has grown and exploded over the years. And, um, and then she left, and, and when Lee Byers stepped down as the, the Executive Director of the Eugene Springfield Metro Partnership, and I then took over, the smartest thing I ever did is I hired Glenda Polling back. And then, and she was there, uh, working with not only myself, but. Polling back. And then, and she was there working with not only myself, but Jack Roberts. And she was highly involved and very much involved with, I think our project name was called Love Boat, if I remember correctly, but we know that as Royal Caribbean Cruise Line today. And so there's been so many different projects that she's been involved in. She really has been a strong economic development manager and really understanding. And so your knowledge has been great. It's been terrific to watch not only your knowledge, but how, the fact that you took, I really appreciate the fact, you took the step back and made sure Sarah was up front. And to me, that's a sign of really good leader. And so I really appreciate it. I know that for us personally, this is not goodbye at all. And in fact, I expect we'll be spending probably more time now. But I wish you the best, and especially being a grandparent. And I know that's really what's, one of the big, strong wishes of you. So, thank you very much for your service here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Glenda, I'm a firm believer in you judge a manager best after they leave and what do they leave behind. And I'm also a firm believer that you're leaving a very strong organization behind. You've built it from scratch, basically. And I've been working with you for a lot of years. I first worked with you more closely when I was on the City of Eugene's representative for the Metro Partnership. And just, I've admired your work, not only from a distance, but I've often commented on the very specifics, which I won't go into right now, other than one thing. And this is the thing I worry about the most, is that I believe it's you that comes up with the names, the code names. We have Big Fish, we have Project New Deal, Love Boat, you know, the different things that we can. Who's going to do that? Are you going to, can we retain you just to keep these names going?
You could.
Sarah's creative.
So, you know, I, just one minute cannot even begin to express the gratitude that I have for you and the work that you've done and the organization that you're leaving behind. Because we're here today. Three, four years ago, when I first started working with you, a little over three years ago, when I first started working with you, we were here. And, you know, and the trajectory is wonderful. You know, it was close to, a little over three years ago, that I came to your office to talk to you about economic development. And you introduced me to a part-time employee who I thought, you know, this is a pretty good succession plan you got here, part-time at this point in time. And the day that I met Sarah Majewski, now Sarah Case, was, you know, I mark that as one of the great days in my involvement with Lane County. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you for what you're leaving behind. And thank you for what you are leaving behind is going to be.
Thank you.
Well, there's not a whole lot I can add to that, other than my thanks, but I think I'm going to come around the dais here and present you with a certificate of our appreciation and our traditional parting gift from Lane County. You know, we have to give you the crystal-covered bridge.
Hey, I've heard about that. I've always wanted one.
So, I am going to step around, and hopefully, anyone has a cellphone or something like that might want to capture this moment before you have. There we go.
So, before I go up there, can I just say, I would like to just say one thing also, and that's that-
Go ahead, while walking around.
So, I do love Lane County. I've really enjoyed working for Lane County and with what I consider family and friends. And I'm going to miss that camaraderie. And truly, I am Lane County proud. And I'm really proud of the organization. I'm proud of the division I'm leading, and I'm proud of the work that Sarah has done. And I'm really proud that, of you guys, because I use this little statement a lot, and that's that without you, we wouldn't be where we are today as an economic development division. And I so love those five-zero votes, and so I'm passing that along to Sarah. So, okay, thank you.
Getting a picture of Pat taking a picture.
Pictures of people taking pictures.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
And thanks to the board and everybody for that kind of unscheduled, non-agenda item. So, moving on to a more serious topic, we're now up to Item 7A, Order 15102707, in the matter of improving Lane County's public sector market competitiveness through updated salary ranges for nonrepresented employees effective January 2016. And I believe, Mr. Mokhaiske, you wanted to start out, and then we'll-
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, commissioners. I have some information. The last time that we met, the board asked for a number of different things. And so I'm going to walk through, provides sort of an overview for you. And then Ms. Edwards has responses to some specific questions that we received. First, just to set the context for this issue, you know, I think as the board understands, this is really about recruitment, retention, and advancement of our talented, nonrepresented employees. We have approximately 215 full-time equivalent nonrepresented positions throughout all of our departments in Lane County. Again, these are employees who are not represented by a bargaining unit. Our nonrepresented staff are diverse in their purpose and roles. It's difficult sometimes to pin down, you know, or classify what all non-reps do generally because they're so unique and different and diverse in their purpose and roles. They're often unique in the organization when it comes to their specific skills that are required, the background experience and knowledge that they need to bring to the table. I think Ms. Polling was, is a good example of someone of all of our nonrepresented employees, many of whom supervise other staff, but they also do technical work themselves. So these are not just managers of people, these are managers of people who also do actual work every single day. I want to make sure that that point gets focused on. So, some examples of the areas where our nonrepresented employees are leading. Our nonrep employees manage six community health centers, one of which we just opened a couple of weeks ago, serving 60,000 residents throughout Lane County on an annual basis. Our nonrepresented employees maintain extensive regional projects that serve the county and our partners, including our data center and regional geographic information services. They ensure that our citizens and property are protected from those with intent to cause harm. Of course, all of our infrastructure, 1,400 miles of roads, 417 bridges, ensure that those are kept safe and well-maintained. Nearly 13,000 mothers and children receive critical nutrition assistance because of the leadership of our nonrepresented employees. Our parks and open space are managed effectively because of these people. Our nonrepresented employees implement programs that ensure cost-effective delivery of benefits for employees, and I'll touch on that a little bit deeper in a moment. They work to prepare community members and local government agencies for natural disasters through mitigation and response planning. They ensure the public is kept informed of potential health threats and prevention strategies, ensure that our structures are safe for inhabitants, and bring new businesses, as we just talked about, and new jobs to Lane County by facilitating the creation and retention of over 1,000 jobs in the past two years. And they're also instrumental in implementing the board's strategic plan. The priorities and goals established in the board's strategic plan are largely led by our nonrepresented employees. And again, they also support and provide specific technical work in addition to managing and supervising employees. There's a high degree of responsibility that these individuals have. So these are the folks who are managing our budgets throughout all of our departments. An inherently higher level of risk from a financial, risk and reward from a financial standpoint. Now, I'll give just some examples. It shouldn't be a surprise, I think, that as we talk about frequently, Lane County is, since 2009, has been a low-risk auditee, which is a good thing, right? We have been designated by our third-party auditors as having a low risk financially. We have a high bond rating, approximately the fourth-highest bond rating that Moody's Investment Services provides. A low debt rate, you heard the individual from Winnebago talk about how they weathered the storm through the downturn in the economy. One of the reasons we have a high bond rating is because we have a low debt rate. So our nonrepresented employees have been extremely effective at lowering the debt that we carry on our books, which improves our bond rating and our overall financial condition. We've heard, and I'll touch on in a minute, the PERS Reserve, because there's been some reporting on the cost of PERS adjustments in the 2017 to 19 biennium. But we're in a relatively good position compared to other governmental agencies because we have a reserve in place to help cushion the impact of that, in large part because of the foresight and planning of our nonrepresented employees. We also have a health insurance reserve of over $2 million, which put us in a solid position to move to a self-funded health plan, which reduced our budgetary costs by $2 million in the current year. These are the types of initiatives, these creative, innovative solutions that reduce costs and improve services for the public. Our nonreps are also responsible for several improvements that help get employees that reduce costs and get employees back to work more quickly after an illness or an accident. We recently did a dependent audit, so an audit of all the dependence on our health insurance plan, which generated an estimated savings annually of around $130,000 per year. We moved, as I mentioned, to a self-funded health insurance plan for medical coverage, $2 million budgeted savings in the first year. We redesigned our health plan for two of our bargaining units and for our nonrepresented employees, so that new, new nonrepresented employees, as well as in those two other bargaining units, hired after January 1, 2016, will contribute to their health insurance costs. And that was one of the questions that was raised over the last several weeks, is that county employees don't contribute to their health insurance costs. All nonrepresented employees hired after January 1, 2016, I believe that's one month from today, will contribute to their health insurance costs. We have a new benefit administration plan, online open enrollment that transmits data electronically versus paper, which was recently implemented. A new employee assistance program that was implemented that reduced costs significantly and improved the quality of service received. We implemented, our nonrepresented employees implemented a new program called Managing Within the Law in the last few years, which reduced the risk, improved the quality of supervision, and managing of employees, and reduced risk and costs over time. We implemented a new online applicant tracking system, a new online learning management system, new employee orientation program. And I'll touch just on a couple of specific positions. You know, the risk, of course, here is you leave people out, but I think it's important to just give some examples of the type of people that we're talking about because of the uniqueness and diversity of these individuals. One is our workers' comp administrator, and a committee of nonrepresented employees that oversee workers' compensation issues. That individual and that group have aggressively managed our workers' comp costs and are focused on getting employees back to work more quickly. As a result of their aggressive efforts over the last two years, outstanding losses have been reduced by nearly $1 million from 2013 to 2015. New claims filed are down 38% in 2014 from 2010. Our costs in 2014 were down 14% from the prior year. 67% of the county's claims for workers' compensation are less than $5,000 in value. That's a good thing. Another position that I'll mention, our property and tax manager has worked with our six neighboring counties, an initiative that we've talked about with the board. They have to create a seven-county Southwest Oregon Assessment and Taxation Coalition. The coalition has received $345,000 in grant funding from the Oregon Legislature to pool resources and streamline our efforts. And it's, they've designed a database to identify businesses within the seven-county region subject to Oregon business property tax filings. And the goal is to ensure that we're collecting the appropriate amount of tax revenue from businesses that may not otherwise be contributing what is required. $190,000 was saved in the first year. And an anticipated five-year return is approximately $1 million. And this is for, you know, all the taxing entities in Lane County and neighboring jurisdictions. So it's Lane County, the municipal governments, the school districts, and all those taxing agencies that we provide service to in assessment and taxation. Another position, our capital projects manager, as all of you know, has just done outstanding work to modernize the county's data center. We've increased the reliability for Lane County, and our regional partners have reduced facility and energy use by 69%. So we've talked about, they need to reduce costs, but also they need to reduce our environmental footprint. And we're doing that in our investments and building improvements. We, approximate savings to improvements made in this building that we're in here today, the public services building, is approximately $26,000 per year in energy costs. This individual and the facilities committee, and other nonrepresented employees, were able to use matching funds, locate space, renovate and open two federally qualified health centers in the past year, less than 18 months. Both those projects, as the board knows, had very tight timelines. We leveraged outside private funding, and we're trying to meet the needs of individuals on the urban health plan that were responsible for serving, and just an outstanding turnaround in quality in the facilities. We've leveraged grants, energy incentives, and financing of over $4.2 million in project funding, let in last fiscal year alone for different investments. Finally, an example of positions, our waste management engineer and waste management division manager is responsible for the Short Mountain landfill and all waste recycling operations and transfer stations in Lane County. Because of the innovation and work of that individual and groups of nonrepresented employees, we've added more than 50 years to the projected life of Short Mountain landfill, which reduces costs for our fee payers and taxpayers and improves the environmental outlook for our community. So, that's to share with you a little bit of an overview of, and this, you know, was again in response to some of the questions that we had and desires to hear about the value and diversity and uniqueness of our nonrepresented employees. One of the challenges that we face is that our nonrepresented employees who leave us for other positions, as with any position, but for nonreps, the challenge is exacerbated, creates a cost to refill those positions and maintain levels of service at the same time. So while not every represent, nonrepresented employee who leaves us shares the underlying reason with us, those that do, we know that there's an increasing challenge with the compensation package. We know that an increasing number of nonreps who are leaving employment with Lane County are leaving for other positions, and that number grew from 11% to 45% in the past year. Some positions, nonrepresented positions, may take months to fill. And I'll give you a couple of examples of this, when positions become vacant. And then I'll talk for a minute about the impact of the, of those vacancies. Our security administrator in our information services department is responsible for the safeguarding of data and systems, forensics, and electronic discovery, compliance with regulatory requirements and recommendations for policy oversight. In this case of the security administrator, we were unable to make an offer high enough to retain the top candidate initially. And that person declined to take the position because it would have been a significant reduction in pay. The individual that was hired instead was dismissed during the probationary period, was not meeting the needs, and the position is now currently open. So an example of a significantly critical position that we've gone through a fair amount, a significant amount of transition on. In assessment and taxation, they just closed a search for an appraiser supervisor that received only one application and is now going to be reopened. This is a position that is statutorily required by the state. If we're unable to fill the position, it puts Lane County in danger of noncompliance with Oregon Department of Revenue funding eligibility, which can lead to a loss of revenue for the county. And it could then potentially lead to reduced revenues in other taxing districts for which we collect taxes. Another example, we have a total of five nurse supervisors. We've lost all five of those individuals in those positions in the past year. We filled two of those five positions, while the remaining three are still open and have been for the past five to seven months. Another example, our community health services manager, so you attended the, many commissioners were at the opening of our health clinic, our community health services manager position was open for 10 months, and we went through three different rounds of hiring to find a qualified candidate, and had to seek additional help to actually finalize that recruitment effort. effort. So went through a great degree of expense on that front. Our building official and building program manager position has been vacant for a significant amount of time, went through, had hired someone, they left for another, a neighboring jurisdiction, went through another recruitment effort, and had to go through a couple of those rounds. We had difficulty in filling that position. It's been vacant, as I mentioned, multiple times in recent years. When the position is vacant, we experience inconsistencies in plan review standards, fee collection, building code interpretations by staff, and prioritization of work. And I'll note on this one, we've seen more publicly the impact of that position being vacant. Before the person, we have been successful in filling that position now. And we saw with the local school district, the challenge in getting, you know, dealing with the extent of the work and having the staff necessary to provide the level of service needed. Since that person's been on staff, the response we've received is overwhelmingly positive. The issues that the, this district for one had experienced have gone away, that we've received outstanding service. So the issue is the gap in time when we had a vacancy in that position for a significant period of time. Currently, the transportation planning manager, county surveyor, and field engineering superintendent positions are vacant. Two previous recruitments for a field engineer were unsuccessful. The field engineer provides oversight for all road projects contracted by the county. Our former public health manager retired in November of 2013. It has taken more than two years and four rounds of hiring to finally fill that position. So it is true that some of these positions that I've shared examples of eventually have been filled, and they've been filled, I will note, with what we believe are outstanding people who are doing great work, because we don't settle, is the other thing. We're not settling for the individuals that we're hiring into these positions. We're demanding that we, that we get the best. But it's important to acknowledge the cost of having so many critical positions go unfilled for such an extended period of time. The public health manager position is an especially good example of that cost. During the past two years, when that position was open, we had someone step in to add the role of manager to their duties. This person not only had to maintain the already demanding role that they had, but also to take on the normal activities of public health manager, acted as the incident commander for a major inter-jurisdictional incident command situation related to meningitis last year. The consolidation of those roles meant that efforts were focused on the most basic services rather than growth or adapting to the significant health care and community changes Lane County is experiencing. So it limited our ability to really expand and do the type of value-added work that we like to see from many of these positions. The ability to plan, grow, and improve for the future is severely impeded when positions like this go unfilled for long periods of time, and the primary focus is by necessity to stay currently, to stay on the current course. So when employees leave, Lane County incurs numerous expenses searching for and onboarding their replacements. These include advertising, recruiting, background checks, time spent interviewing candidates, benefits administration, training, loss productivity, so on and so forth. So taken all together, those costs can have budget implications and service implications. There's a lot of benchmark data on the cost to recruit in higher positions nationally and that we've done internally. I'm not going to go through all of that, but I'm happy to answer if you want an understanding, particularly for, we know based on national benchmark data and our own analysis, that the cost for recruiting and filling these non-represented positions is significantly higher than filling other positions in the organization. So we have benchmark data to support that. Again, just for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through it, but I'm happy to answer specific questions about that if you'd like. An example of that, as I mentioned earlier, is our understaffed land management divisions. We've talked a lot in that area. We have been successful now in filling the building official position and the land management division manager position with outstanding individuals, but we've struggled to keep up with the demand for service while multiple non-represented positions are open for hire, requiring more than one recruitment. So I'm going to get to my conclusion here and then turn it over to Marcia to go through the specific question and answers. We are seeing an increasing percent of non-represented employees leaving the county to accept positions in other places. I mentioned this at the beginning, in 2013, 11% of the non-reps who left their positions attributed their exit to acceptance of another position. In 2014, that number increased to 45%. So we know that there's competition in the market. There are a number of reasons that that is likely the case, improvement in the economy, other neighboring jurisdictions, you know, having the ability to hire positions, but it is a reality and one of the challenges that we face. We're seeing an increasing percent of our overall job postings for non-represented positions and needing to increase the duration of our postings to recruit for qualified candidates. Non-reps make up approximately 16% of the county's overall workforce. In 2013, 38%, I'm sorry, 38 of the 178 job postings, so 21% of the postings in 2013 were for non-represented positions, and the average duration of the posting was 22 days. In 2014, 119 of the 301 job postings, 39% were for non-reps, and the average duration of the posting was 38 days. So we're seeing an increase both in the amount of non-rep positions that are becoming vacant as well as the duration of the time that they're, they are vacant. And those are average numbers for you. There are extremes. There are some positions we can fill sooner, and then there are extreme examples that I gave you for some critical positions. In Healthing Human Services alone, nearly 2/3 of the current job openings in mid-November, this last November, were for non-represented positions, 2/3, while non-reps make up only 14% of the overall workforce in that department. So I hope those examples help in some way to set the context. Again, this is a very complex issue. The 215 positions that we're talking about in this group are different, they're unique, they're diverse, they provide critical services to the community and the organization. And I wanted to just be able to take a minute to share with you the complexity of the type of work that's happening there and some of the challenges that we're facing. There've also been a number of questions, so I'll take on a couple of them, and again, I'll turn it over then to Marcia Edwards. One question, and I'm just going to say this for the record because I've heard it a few times, Lane County employees are not exempt from paying any taxes. So there was a comment made in social media of the community that somehow there was an exemption for their, Lane County employees, all employees, top to bottom, everybody is required to pay the exact same taxes that all other members of the community. That's property tax, income taxes, and everything else. I mentioned the PERS issue, and if there are questions about that, I think, you know, Commissioner Liken, for example, had asked me about it. And we do have a, we have a $2 million reserve, PERS reserve that's in place. So there's been question statewide around the impact of the PERS changes in the 2000, let me think, 7, the fiscal year, 17, 18 fiscal year is the first year that Lane County will be hit with that. We are estimating at this stage, and we don't know the final numbers, that it'll be around a $2 million annual impact countywide. We have a $2 million reserve from PERS that was done, again, because our budget and financial non-represented employees have the foresight to budget that amount, and the board had the leadership at the time when it became aware of the reduction in cost. You didn't take the money back, you put it into reserve to have the ability to deal with the situation that we're in now. So that will allow us to smooth the impact, won't negate the impact over time, but smooth it out. I want to make a comment that the recommendations of the 2013 study, there was a study in 2000, Fox Lawson Study, Compensation Study for Non-Represented Employees that was done in 2013. The costs to implement that study were much greater than this study that has been done. One of the reasons we went out, we delayed, and we waited two years, and we went back out and did another study, is largely because the comparators that were used in 2013 were much greater. They weren't equitable in what we were comparing our represented groups to, the five-county comparable that we're using now for everybody we've established in the last year. We used, in 2013, the study looked at Monoma County, it looked at the city of Eugene, city of Springfield, it looked at the private sector. We've removed all those comparables and said, no, we're going to focus on an equitable group of five-county comparables. That model has significantly reduced the adjustments that have been recommended and the cost for those proposals. So I want to make that clear, that the 2015 study is significantly less in terms of the percentage adjustments and the dollar amount compared to the 2013 study. And then, of course, you can look at the past seven to eight years when we haven't done market adjustments, or COLA's saved the 1.5% earlier this year in the savings not implementing any adjustments for those folks. There's been a question about FTEs, and there was a comment made that I saw in an editorial about the reduction of positions in the private sector, that they've reduced positions. I wanted to just state that when you take out the adjustments for the jail levy and the community health centers, where we've received additional revenue to fill positions, if you take those out, Lane County has reduced its workforce by 300 in the past eight years. That's approximately a 20% reduction in workforce. So at the same time that we haven't made adjustments in market or COLA's for our non-represented folks in the past seven or eight years, we've also reduced employment by 300, approximately 300 positions, 20, around 20% in the past eight years. And I already said this, but I'll say it again, all non-represented positions hired after, any non-represented position hired after January 1, 2016, will contribute towards their health insurance costs. And the, you know, any other discussions about health insurance impacts for future or current employees will be part of the bargaining process with each of our bargaining units. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to just provide that context. I'm happy to answer any questions after Ms. Edwards is finished with her Q and A response.
Aren't you glad there's not a quiz after? Yeah. I've only got a few questions that we received, and basically they were questions that the commissioners provided to us. So we're happy to provide those responses now. So I'll read the questions verbatim and then give you the answers. So the first question is, I'm interested in knowing, for a county employee supporting two other people, such as spouse, elderly parent, or child, how many non-represented positions currently and under the county administrator's recommendation qualify for SNAP or federal food assistance, commonly and formerly known as food stamps? So the answer to that is, if the assumption is a family of three and no other income, there are no non-represented positions that qualify currently or will qualify under the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program if the proposed ranges are approved. Next question, are there any impacts on non-rep Lane County employees related to state minimum wage policy? And the answer to that is, there are currently no non-represented employees who earn less than minimum wage, which is $9.25 an hour. If the state approves the $15 per hour minimum wage proposal and the proposed increased ranges is not approved, some of our non-reps would then, of course, fall under that. They would be affected by the minimum wage. Next question, are other counties having difficulty recruiting, and if so, for what positions and to what do they attribute those difficulties? We did survey our comparator counties, and that would be Clackamas, Deshues, Jackson, Marion, and Washington. And the difficulty with doing these types of surveys is sometimes they have the ability to respond, as in the time to respond. Sometimes they keep different types of data. So the data I'm going to be giving you is not definite, but it's what we could get. So for Clackamas County, they said yes, they are having some difficulties in recruiting, and the position listed was behavioral health positions. They said that it could be salary, could be the market. Again, this information is kind of anecdotal, they really haven't done their surveying to gather that data. And in Deshues County, yes, again, they quoted behavioral health positions. They said that could be attributed to the fact that they have new programs, new grant money, and potentially new philosophies. Jackson County and Marion County reported no difficulties in recruiting. Washington County said yes, they were. The positions they cited were H&amp;HS, land use transportation, inspectors, plans examiners, IT, and nursing. They said it could be attributed to the fact that they are both urban and rural, which is certainly something that we experience here in Lane County. The next question, what is the turnover rate for non-represented employees at Lane County, and how does that compare to Washington, Marion, Clackamas, Deshues, and Jackson Counties? Again, we don't have consistency of information in regard to turnover rates, so I will certainly give you what I have, but just for that caveat that it is not consistent. And this information is subject to a number of different factors and only represents one year. So just giving you that heads up. So Clackamas County, this is for the 2014 calendar year, their total population of employees, so not just non-reps, was at 7.1% turnover. Deshues County, we received no response. Jackson County, for the 2014-15 fiscal year, that, this was again, the total employee population, not just non-reps, it was 10%. For Marion County, again, they gave us the fiscal year of 1415, total population again, and that was at 9.11%. Washington County gave us the 2014 calendar year, just the non-rep population, was 13.187%. And for Lane County, I'll give you the non-rep numbers. For 2014 fiscal year, it was 12%. For the 2015 fiscal year, we're at 16%. And those were all the questions I received.
Further questions for staff? Everybody get their answers, I think. So any discussion from the board? About a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stewart.
Before I possibly attempt a motion, I want to say thank you to staff for researching the questions that were asked. And then also, county administrator, I think you could write your state-of-the-county speech off of a couple items that you've given here today for information of great work that our staff is doing in our communities. As a member that is on the board that works with different departments, I, you know, fully understand the challenges that we have with recruiting specifically. Some of it has to do with retention, but recruiting of positions have been pretty challenging, specifically in the land use department. Although we do have, we've been successful recently in filling those positions, but, you know, those periods of time when it takes an extensive amount of time to fill those positions are very challenging for us as we're trying to meet that increased demand and workload. Another piece for me, as we talk about this topic, it's when I try to put myself in the position, it's about, I think, back, how would I deal with this? It's really about fairness. I think we've tried to be fair with all of our employees, you know, when it comes time to compensation and our bargaining efforts and trying to deal with the constraints that we have. And, you know, for me to accept that for, you know, seven years or eight years, one cost of living increase of 1.5% for this specific non-representative, representative group, when the other bargaining units were able to, or other employees averaged about close to 10% increase over the same period of time. You know, like I said, it's about fairness, and I like to try to do my best to treat everybody fair and equal. And for me to ask employees to work for this organization for a quarter of their work life without receiving an adjustment in their compensation, that's a, that's a big request. I mean, you'd have to say, you're awfully committed to this organization, to say that I'm not going to, you know, be able to keep up with costs of living, you know, as a parent that's putting a child through school right now, college up there in the Portland area, experiencing that, when I went to school, you know, back in the mid-'80s, I could work all summer long and make enough money to pay for my college tuition. Well, that's not the case today because it's like five times more than what it was when I went. So, you know, when I bring myself to this decision, I think we've done an excellent job trying to justify the comparables and what's taking place. You know, I have, in my personal time, asked a few private sector businesses what they're experiencing, what kind of compensation rates for, can't compare apples to apples, you know, specifically, but when you're talking about, you know, a number of people they supervise and, you know, kind of alike position, you know, our compensation ranges are not more than what, what the businesses I spoke with. So... So I'm comfortable with this and plan to support us moving forward with the recommendation of creating these new classifications and trying to support Mr. Stewart as he's trying to get good staff underneath him and move us and this organization into the, to the best place that we possibly can to serve our citizens.
Thank you. So I just thought of a question I wanted to go back to, and while Commissioner Stewart was talking there. You mentioned a couple times, you know, one position that took three rounds to hire, another that took four rounds to hire. What is the average cost for a single round of, you know, advertising, you know, winnowing through the applications, setting up appointments, doing the interviews and all that stuff, and then to be unsuccessful? What is the cost of a single round approximately?
What I can do, Mr. Chair, is I'll share with you the national benchmark data real quick, so I'll walk through the difference, so you get a flavor for this, and this is not the benchmark data that we've created, it's national. And then Ms. Edwards, if you have anything in addition. I think there is some variation, certainly depending on the amount of time that it's open and the type of process that we go through. But I'll first say the Center for Economic and Policy Research has created a turnover calculator that helps organizations and businesses understand the cost. Using that calculation method, the national averages tell us that the cost to replace a $10 per hour employee is $3,328, or 16% of the annual salary. The cost to replace a mid-range $40,000 per year position is $8,000, or 20% of the annual salary. The cost to recruit and hire, recruit, hire, and replace a $100,000 per year position is $213,000, or 213% of the annual salary. And typically, you know, so that's the national data. But depending on the process that we go through and the amount of time that it's required, you know, there's the cost of advertising I mentioned, the cost of, you know, posting, the cost of staff in terms of reviewing applications, scoring applications, the time and cost involved with panel interviews, and then all the things that I mentioned around background checks, time spent interviewing, benefits administration, training, and then the lost productivity pieces that are involved. I don't know if you have anything else?
Well, when that search fails, of course, all these costs get multiplied. And the longer a position is vacant, the more productivity that is lost. You know, for instance, if Mr. Mokr Heisky and I are in like positions, and I am gone, he's going to have to pick up the slack. Now, projects may not move forward, you know, things may not get done because priorities will have to be set. So when the position remains vacant, for instance, we had a position that was vacant for, I believe, two years. It has a major impact on the services we can provide the public and the services we provide internally for our employees.
And I would just add, in addition to that, there's, you know, there's also the potential for lost revenue. So in many cases, I mentioned the physician and assessment and taxation, where there's revenue that we rely on from the state. If we aren't able to fill that position and provide the services, we stand to lose potential revenue. Our community health centers generate a significant amount of revenue, so one of the things we struggle with in recruiting and hiring for physicians and nurses and the non-represented employees to run our community health centers is there's actually revenue that we can be, you know, we can be billing for and revenue that we can be collecting if we actually had the providers and the staff in place to do that work. Then I will also say that the national data, we don't believe that our costs are, you know, are necessarily reflective of what this national benchmark data shows, just want to provide that as a context for the board that, you know, there's, the more complex the position, the more complex and costly the process to recruit for that position is. And you tend to have smaller pools of individuals that qualify for a lot of these positions because it requires extensive amount of experience, technical experience, management experience, and other things. So the cost in recruitment and hiring for those types of positions increases because of those factors. We believe we're much more efficient than the national benchmark would.
Good. Can't imagine spending $213,000 for a single recruitment and training. You know, it's, there is a cost to not being competitive, is what I wanted to point out. You know, and when we have to do these multiple recruitments, we have these open positions, it causes service issues, it causes potential loss of revenue. And you look at what our non-reps are having to manage now, as Lane County's lost its federal timber funding, we've become greatly dependent on grant funding. Every grant has a different set of criteria to make sure that you don't lose that grant because you failed to keep track of a certain piece of data, submitted on time and the correct schedule and everything. That's our non-rep employees that track all that stuff. You know, so our funding is so dependent on this class of employee and have, you know, when you start seeing higher turnover rates, particularly for other employment, and that's increasing, that leads to, you know, our ability to track those revenue sources accurately and to be able to continue to re-up grants and get them in the future becomes a risk. And that's been a major source of our income in the last five years since we've lost our timber revenue. So, yeah, I think these are critically important positions, and it's scary that we don't have a security administrator in our IT department right now. Because when you think about the data Lane County handles, you know, we've got HIPAA data through our clinics, we've got data for criminal records, including victims' data, we have, I don't know how many points you touch in the Lane County with credit cards, whether you're buying a park pass or, you know, a new dog license, you know, there's different places we deal with credit card data. You know, it's an enormous amount of data we protect, and we don't have a security administrator right now, and it's being kind of covered by other management, so that's a big issue for me. Commissioner Stewart?
One thing I wanted to say today is that I thought the county staff, particularly you, Marcia, and you, Steve, made a pretty significant step forward in that the comparators you used were the five counties that we've been using in our collective bargaining with the strike-prohibited as well as strike-allowed bargaining units. And I thought that was a pretty significant improvement over the previous study that really didn't look at the same comparators. So I thought that was a very positive feature of this. Another feature I liked was that the study that was presented a few weeks ago, it really clearly showed that on the graph of what positions were under-market and what positions were over-market, that a really dominant number, and what sticks in my mind was 15% and 85%, a dominant number, were under-market. I think that one of the things that is attractive about this proposal is that it does attempt to deal with those under-market positions in a broad sense. And I think that County Administrator is highlighting today the number of positions and types of positions that are so under-market that we're seeing the difficulty in filling them. In some sense, we address that with our physicians in the clinics by just, out of the cycle or out of the process of looking at all non-represented positions, highlighting the ones that had the most need to change. So one thing that occurred to me after our last conversation on this was, well, there is a sense of some nervousness about the overall budget, and of course, that's always the case, and so we could just write that off and say, well, that's the way it is all the time. But I did sense in the board's last discussion of this that there's a sense that if we knew better what our overall budget picture was going to be, there might be a little more willingness on the part of the board to go in this direction. And we had a discussion of, well, what about maybe convening the Budget Committee? Well, this is a board decision. How the budget is funded, how the budget is allocated, that's a Budget Committee and Board function, but setting the actual compensation is the Board function. So it seems like one way to do this is just to say, well, there's some general buy-in, the data certainly shows there's a need to address this, but there's also this hesitancy about the, you know, the finances and the overall budget. So I don't know if there's a way to find an opportunity here for that. Maybe it's just my view and not the dominant view, but I'll just raise that as a possibility in future consideration of this.
Further comments or discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stewart?
I'd like to move approval of order 15-10-27-07 on the matter of approving Lane County's public sector market comparativeness through updating salary ranges for the non-representative employees effective January 2016.
There's second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion to the motion. So I'd just like to state real quick that I'm going to be supporting the motion. I would have supported it a month ago because I understood the compensation study, and I actually understood a lot of what Mr. Mokr Heisky and Ms. Edwards presented today. Back then, I didn't need to have it formally reported, but it's great that we did take the time to have it formally reported. We need to compare to our market for the employees that we have to recruit and retain, and there's a huge cost to us to not be competitive. And one of the things I'll note, you know, for the public, we're not talking about getting to the median of our comparators. We're only going about two-thirds of the way. You know, we're not, you know, what we're proposing in this new salary range is to move close, but not there, all the way there. We've already made a decision to stay below market if we adopt these. If we fail to adopt it, we're making a decision to stay 22% below market on one end and 6% below market on the other. So, you know, that's what we're deciding today. And, you know, there's been some comparisons between us and the median income in Lane County and how that shifted. Our employees are not the median employees of the total of Lane County. The one thing about being a government employer is we employ healthcare professionals, we employ folks that manage health clinics, we employ engineers, we employ, you know, accountants, we employ appraisers, we employ IT specialists. It's not your typical cross-section of the entire employment sector in Lane County. Almost everyone we employ works at higher than the median salary in Lane County. And those folks and employers like us, take for instance, Peace Health, I am sure that Peace Health has not frozen their salaries since 2008 to stay competitive in their marketplace against Good Samaritan, OHSU, to keep good employees at Peace Health. And I'm certain that they're using that competitive salary base to recruit and retain people, and they understand the cost of unfilled positions to their organization. There is a cost to Lane County if we don't keep competitive. And I think, you know, it becomes difficult to understand that there's actually some cost savings in keeping these people. But when you think about $2 million saved in health insurance here and, you know, 1.5 million in workman's comp over the last couple of years, you know, $130,000 here, $200,000 there, these are the folks that are keeping our costs down. These are the folks that are keeping the wheels on the bus through grants. You know, this is really a critical set of employees, and it's not all a bunch of high-paid employees. You look at the 191 employees that be affected, there's 92 of them that make less than $75,000 a year. You know, that's almost half. So it's not all, you know, the top number that makes the headlines. This is really a cross-section of our employees and employees that are responsible for such critical services. So I'll be voting to support the motion, and I believe it's the correct thing to do for Lane County. We've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, since 2008 by asking these employees to sacrifice, to stay below market by as much as 22%. Getting them partway back now, I think, is a reasonable thing to do to prevent future cost in unfilled positions and, you know, recruitments that have to be repeated. So I'm going to support the motion. Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Mokr Heisky. You know, I'm looking at a chart right here, and it's percentage increases, COLAs, et cetera, that have been granted to different collective bargaining units and to non-representants. I'm not going to go into any detail, this is a public chart, this is not a secret chart that I'm looking at right here. And looking back to 2009, 2010, I'm looking at a bunch of 2.0s, 3.0s, 2.5s, and a zero. 2009, 2010, who was the county administrator in 2009?
Was that Jeff or was that Bill? No, I?
It was 2009.
Was that Jeff or Bill in 2009?
It was after Bill, it was. Mr. Spurts? So, you know, and I'm not pointing at any fingers right now, but it's reprehensible that starting in 2009, we have a column of zeros. You know, only in one column is it zeros, all the way down, there's only one column that didn't get any COLAs during that period of time. It's reprehensible that past county administrators allowed that to happen. It's also commendable that the current county administrator and staff are seeking ways to compensate for that, what I just called a reprehensible act that's been happening for a lot of years. And, you know, like you, Mr. Chair, I understood the discussion, I understood the report. I've been a part of many such reports that came to us back in October. And I do understand that. What I don't really agree with at this point in time, and as I sit here, you know, I'm counting votes, I've not polled anybody, but I've counted probably at least three votes that are a yes on this. Firstly, I would have preferred a different process, and the, you know, I think we just granted $100,000, you know, about 12% of what we're talking about here, a little, as far as the overall cost of this, we just granted $100,000 to economic development, and that came from Fund 260, is that right? Fund 260, which is video lottery money. This, the money that we're talking about here generally comes from general fund, I'm sure some of it comes from different elements, but the, while it's not a incumbent on the Budget Committee to look at specifically how staff is compensated, the public outcry that's surrounded this since October lets me know that people don't fully understand what we're doing or why we're doing it, and whatever we say up here doesn't fully cover why we're doing it, and it doesn't cover it in everybody's mind. So personally, I would prefer that we look at it during a budget cycle, and where does the money actually come from? The $800,000 or so dollars come from that would fund the pay raises that were, that are being contemplated, that are going to be voted upon today. And, you know, I think, a question for you, Ms. Miller, do we ever do retroactive raises of collective bargaining units, COLAs? Do they ever go back in time?
We have agreed to those in the past.
Retroactive is something that we do have done in the past, and it's not uncommon in either private or public agencies to do retroactive pay increases. So my preference would be to go through a more public process where a lot of the discussion that has, that we've started to have here becomes more public. You know, I heard a statement this morning, "There are ways to incentivize management that unions don't necessarily support." Well... Well, merit pay, for instance. Now, merit pay can be a very arbitrary thing, and I won't go into too much detail about that, but there are ways to compensate people. So, I think, you know, we've not really vetted that in public as to how people are compensated, as to where the money comes from. Personally, I would prefer that we gave a COLA effective January 1st of this year to the non-represented employees. And that might be something, an average of what's been happening with collective bargaining units in place, maybe 2, 2.1%. I don't see us going that direction at this point in time. So, personally, I would love to have the discussion in greater detail as to where it comes from, what other options are available as far as compensation are concerned, particularly for the management people who are in the represented, the class of non-represented employees, excuse me. So, I just want to commend you. Commissioner Stewart, Steve, said that keep that list that you just recited at hand for the State of the County address because that is a role of the accomplishments that have happened with not just the 215 non-represented, but the represented employees in this county. I mean, they've done a great job of making certain that we're using our dollars the best way we can possibly use our dollars. And I'm interested in that. I'm highly interested in making certain that the dollars that we have are used in the best way that we can possibly use them. And consequently, I, once again, I would prefer that we go into a more detailed and public process that explores more where the money comes from and where, and other options for compensation. So, with that, I'm going to be a no.
Commissioner Licon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, I'm glad you did bring up the pilot, I call it the pilot with the Southwestern Taxation Assessment Coalition. And I think that's important to note because conversations, I think probably many of us have had, I know I've had with Douglas County in particular on their public health issue down there, and it's pretty significant where it's practically crumbling. And there was conversations earlier about Lane County potentially looking at that. And because, let's face it, is the Oregon Health Authority going to come in and take over the Douglas County Public Health? Likely not. And in fact, if anything, the whole idea would be for Lane County, beans were the closest to them and we have a strong system set up, would potentially move in that direction. I know that they're working with a nonprofit, I know there's some things going on there they're trying to, they're working on. I think eventually what'll happen is it's likely to fall in our lap. And I bring this up because I have a funny feeling that there's going to be more of this beginning to happen. When you look at the counties that are struggling with their budgets, and I think, you said something I think is really important, we have a very high bond rating, so we have a good portfolio management here at Lane County. Our struggles have been, as well as other Southwest counties, have been the day-to-day income, operations. And so, you know, I'm looking at that as potentially where that's going to be moving in that direction. So, we're going to be calling on our employees to potentially take a look at how are we going to walk in and manage and help manage these other counties, whether it's public health. Mike, right now, is clearly taking the lead on the Assessment Coalition, which, by the way, I've had conversations with other assessors in other counties because I've been curious. Because this was kind of my brainchild to begin with. How do you like it? And I've had nothing but, it's all been positive from KUS, from Curry, from Douglas, I mean, from Douglas. All the assessors have said this has really been a really good idea going forward and that they're hoping that this will go beyond pilot and become permanent. I think Alex and Jim Johnson, who was the, who worked with us on this, actually gave a report to the House Revenue Committee because they asked for it, and the report was very positive. So, I think we're going to be going down this road. I think we'll be calling on employees to do more, especially on the management side. I would highly encourage you, Steve, to have, to continue with those conversations with those other counties and I think with the state as well. I think that's important because, for lack of a better word, you may be seeing the creation of what I call almost super counties because I don't, I think our choices are becoming limited. If they're not going to harvest the timber and if not, they're going to do it in lieu of, I think we're going to have to be pretty creative in how we approach government. Government can't be the same as it was 20 years ago. It's going to have to adapt and improvise. And I think that this is a potential partnership and coalition that can be formed. And they're going to be looking at Lane County because we're the, for lack of a better word, I won't say big dog, we're the large county when it comes to the Southwest. And they'll be looking to Lane County to work on and to, in a sense, help these other counties who are having a struggle to deliver services. So, I just wanted to put that out there. I think that that's something that's coming in the future.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing, hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
So, we are into our lunch hour, and there were some people that had commitments during the lunch hour. So, I am going to move the rest of our morning agenda till after our items 12A and B in the afternoon, and we are going to recess until 1:30.